Do not that.
No, I forgot.
You ever draw a part?
Into the Republic.
I highlighted them. I have some time on my hands. There's been people's questions that weren't fine.
Did you do the copy of Dan's?
I didn't. I'll just pull it up on here.
You want to read?
Oh, I didn't see that. Are we sent it just to you? That's why I'm not on there. If you want me to, I will.
No, I need to.
All right, great.
Whatever you prefer. I can pretend I'm doing wrong.
And.
We're still waiting for a few people.
We're not like live, are we?
They'll edit it out. Anything before the Pledge of Allegiance. I just started it, but they'll edit it out, so. Just don't say anything too, you know, controversial.
She has a gun. I'm not saying.
Not the gun you have to worry about.
I love jewelry.
No, no good. What would you like to consume? How you doing?
I'm doing okay.
Drywall or never remember.
Cameras still pick up.
Reconsidering. Why would I have a place that.
We're gonna take, put a hat on you.
And I said, yeah, I said, I haven't witnessed any people work being signed, but they were telling contractors that by Labor Day, it will. Functioning the way it is, so.
Ready to go. A call, a meeting to order. Would you please stand and salute the flag? Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. And we don't have the minutes, right?
No, I didn't see that.
Okay, so. So next is Department reports. You want to go first?
Good evening, everybody. Hi. Officer Moore is going to be attending Ellis training. That's. A training that we need at least one officer in our, in our agency to, to take. It's quite expensive. It's eight hundred dollar course and it's a three day course, but Ellis training is for. To go in and instruct the educators and school systems on. Proper methodology for handling an extreme event at one of the schools. We have, we are going to be sitting down and doing training with the whole RSU fifty-two and two different. Excuse me. RSU two, the twenty-ninth of this month, and it's going to include the Ellis training. We have one of the Windsor boxers coming over to assist us with that training. It's going to be two separate blocks, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. One at the. Memorial School and one at the Academy.
You're calling it A L S?
A L I C E, Ellis Training.
This stands for?
No, I don't know. It's an acronym for a lot of words. I call it Ellis. Got called out again at three thirty this morning and I just stayed out on the road since then. I've been getting called out a lot the past. Few weeks. I'm getting tired. Moving on from that. Still working on the audit compliance. It'll be done this Friday. That's when they want it done by, so. Still working through that nightmare. And that's the audit for the CGS, the Criminal Justice Information. And that's one of the reasons why we needed to change our internet. Had it run direct to the PD and not air waving over to the town office to get internet connection. That was a violation of their policy. The other thing that I want to bring up, I put a copy in front of you, highlighted the area of concern. With the complaints we've been receiving on Norris Hill, on the volume of the propane cannons up there. We have addressed the problem with them. They did take some remediation stances, changed the direction of the cannons. Pointed them down towards fishing game and changed the dynamics of it so it wouldn't be as loud, but I can still hear them down to my house and I just. Can't imagine living in that neighborhood up there and putting up with. Those all day long, but doing our research. Town ordinance that we have in place for, for noise does not apply. Because what we did is we contacted the Department of Agriculture last week and they sent an investigator out. And what they base, what they base these type of complaints on is best practices. And that's a determination that's made by the Department of Agriculture. And they send investigator out and he says that everything meets the best practices. Through the Department of Agriculture, so they're not going to step in. Doing a little more. Digging. Under. State law farm operations, the main agriculture protection act prohibits enforcement of municipal orders and ordinances against farm operations, including noise and other associated effects such as odor and dust, insects and fumes. Provide, provided that the operation complies with the main Department of Agriculture and best management practices. So our ordinance, even if it was written as strong as it could be written, can apply to them. So I just wanted to update you on that, that situation because. Those people up there that are living amongst up there. I don't know how they're doing it. I mean, you've got a cannon going off every forty to sixty seconds up there. They've got four cannons set up to keep the crows off the apples. And they have a right to do it, but. Yeah, and he said that it'll probably start within the next couple of weeks. And that's where we stand on that issue, but I wanted to brief you on that because it's a hot cricket issue around town and I don't blame the people in the neighborhood up there for complaining because I couldn't. I'd be upset as well if I was up on the hill. I can hear it down at my house and I'm on the backside of the hill, so. Any questions?
So it's kind of a seasonal, seasonal thing?
It is. This is the first year they, they. Use this type of. Operation to keep the crows out of there and it's one specific brand of apples and it's the Honeycrisp the crows go after. And that's what the cannons were set up for, to keep the, keep the crows away from the Honeycrisp, which is their big money item. When we dealt with, when we dealt with Mr. Cooper up there, he's more than happy to try to help us out, but he's. Not going to cease what he's doing because it's working and keeping the crows out of his apples. So it's just, it's a seasonal thing and. Frustrating because I can't imagine. Living up there and having to put up with that every, every day. I really could.
Oh, are there any other orchards that they're doing this in? I know they got a big crop of Honeycrisp in, in North Mama too, off of.
I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know.
I haven't heard anything over there.
Any other question?
I, I think I would challenge you on the operations.
Don't, don't challenge me. I'm just a middle man.
Yeah, yeah, because it's not a regular farm operation. In other, in other words, what they've done adding these cannons is above and beyond a regular farm operation.
Not according to the Department of Agriculture and they're the ones that regulate that.
Okay, alright, well.
They're the ones who sent out and they said they meet the, meet the best practices. They sent an investigator out to look at it and did the, the noise test thing from the boundary line and said it's all in compliance and. So if you, I guess my, my, I can't give you advice, but I'd be calling the Department of Agriculture.
Do we wait till the public speaks or are we supposed to start? So according to your itinerary, we have a, we wait. So I'm going to wait.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I know what the acronym is, but Alice.
This is relevant to the topic we're talking about. I don't see a reason why we couldn't let.
I'm sure. Yeah. When one of your rules was two minutes to three minutes, which is impossible.
The chair gets.
I am, I am one of the people that live directly on the site, right? And I literally just put up a branded porch that's elevated. It's the yellow house on the top of the hill and a sixty gram of that on my hot tub.
You're the pilot.
Yeah, and I've served.
Can you just identify yourself?
Which way am I looking?
Just, just tell me how to say your name out loud.
Pat Giarrizzo, one thirty-eight Norris Hill Road, Yellow House. Nice to meet you all.
Can you say your name again?
Pat Giarrizzo, G I A, R R I, Z Z O. Here's a picture. This is your packet if you'd like, pro select. You can show the pictures around. That's the aerial. It shows you actually how close we are. We're within twelve hundred to thirteen hundred feet of that facility. This pamphlet has a lot in there for you. You're not one of these, right? I don't understand what it looks like because I have something for them the same thing because I'm going to be fair to everybody, including him. You know, we just, you just talked about best practices and I understand, I'd like to know what the best practices are because I couldn't find anything on one of these cannons anywhere. This is not what I can talk about, but I also have. Rules in here that come from the, the main related statutes, policies and review standards. And basically these are best practices for airports or the best practices for construction sites and all that type of stuff. And in the document too, I had taken a decimal reading at my, at my home and I got sixty eight point nine decibel on one of the blasts and they're all intermittent depending on the, what do you call it? The air. If you have a foggy day, whatever day, it depends on how they do their cannons. I've, I've been with them twice. I've been with his officers, by the way. Officer Kurt and Officer Emily. I don't know the last names. Awesome people, okay? He's got a really good crew. So I'm a little off pace other than reading things here. Again, I first wanted to start with our, our mom of fireworks. Ordinance, just something that y'all did for us. I know it had to go to vote. It says the purpose of this ordinance is to restrict the use of consumer fireworks in order to protect. Public health, safety, welfare, and to ensure the peaceful enjoyment of the private and public property in the town of Mama. That's what I intended to do. Okay, I'm not going to cry here, but you know what? I may be tough and strong, but. I did my time. I retired early. I can't even sit on my porch upstairs with my hot tub and have a cup of coffee, but I'll carry these things. I can wake up early in the morning. They start at five o'clock in the morning. And I can hear, I have very good hearing, even with full helicopters because I protected my hearing. I can hear like a basketball, boom, boom, boom. Okay, that's ridiculous. And these devices are called auditory deterrent devices, ADDs. His devices, his particular ones that the picture that you have there, they're to cover sixty acres, one gun. I don't know how much acres he has. So when the state, when it comes in and goes, oh yeah, we looked at everything, everything, both practices looked right. Oh yeah, okay, correct. Do you know those guns came from Holland? Do you know that the timers that turn them on and off do not work? Do you know that the Cooper bypassed them? They, and they bought them, the two, four cannons were two thousand dollars. That's going to be for the next twenty years. I'm going to listen to this junk, ruin my summers, but this is something else. I'm not supposed to speak that way at this meeting. Supposed to tell you things. They're a hundred and twenty decibels a blast, okay? I lived in Mama eleven years and this has never been used in this orchard and Cooper's is on it for the last five years when he redid. The trees, which is wonderful. I drove through there and I'll tell you what, that's an amazing orchard. It's beautiful. The Honeycrisp, whatever they are, are beautiful apples, okay? But his people that got the guns, or I call them cannons because gun's another word. They had no clue how to run these, which is honest. They're nice. Chris is the name of the gentleman there. There's a Mike over there also and there's a bunch of Jamaicans that told me, yeah, I'm on, we close them at eight, not at seven. It was initially at seven o'clock. Now it's gone to eight. You know. When people go to court, they set a precedent. I don't know how it works, chief, but if something is done a certain way for other industries or certain things and certain things, that's how a precedent is sent, sent, done. There's nothing for, he's hiding behind his agriculture thing. Okay, he was supposed to be here tonight, supposedly, maybe, don't say, but. Supposed to be here tonight because I was told by the Department of Education through one person who called him that he was coming here with a lawyer. Apparently that didn't happen. If you notice tonight, his guns are off. They turned off maybe about, I don't know, five, six hours ago. Kind of strange. So we would relax and maybe not go to a meeting, but I know talking to all people, it makes me feel better, okay? And one thing, that I know we can't do anything. That's what it's looking like, okay? For the rest of my life. I don't want, I don't want to move. I want to live there, okay? So it calls short duration repetitive sounds, maximum levels. This is if you were airport or construction, between seven in the morning, seven PM is sixty-five decibel. This thing went to, one of the thumbs went to sixty-eight point nine. That's not what I'm concerned about. That it went boom, but it's the constant barrage, okay? I am twelve hundred feet from the place. I just told you about that. That was five o'clock. It was six. I don't know what time it was. Should say it on here, but anyways, let me go to something else there. I talk about in here, you can all look at it later, but I talked about it did twenty years by Medevac. I was in two war zones and I made the comment in here that the environments were more quiet than. Where I was greeted when I came home. I was on vacation. I came home to this two weeks ago. I was like, you've got to be kidding me. People are never there and Sundays, they're never there. The cannons go off and go nuts. So how can it be best practice when there's nobody, you see if there's even crows around? They just constantly leave them going. That's, you know, I can scare the crows out of my yard recording. They're gone. For a while. This is, this is, you're going to get a kick out of that page if you go to the other page where it says on Sunday's seven August at seven forty-five in the morning, blue skies. I say that for a reason. Seventeen blasts in four minutes. That's a true sample. Seventeen blasts, four minutes. Now, if you do a calculated average, that's two hundred and fifty-five an hour and daily total of three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five. That's a calculated average, okay? So these guns are not consistent and I'll even prove that too. On August ninth, on Tuesday at six fifty-three in the morning, foggy all morning, it makes a difference with the sound. Twenty-two blasts in four minutes. That's a true sample. Three hundred and thirty an hour, calculated daily, three thousand nine hundred and sixty for the day. Now you can't tell me, and I can't best practices. You know, somebody comes over from the agriculture and looks, goes, yep, it's a beautiful gun. It's hooked up, right? Craig, it's not going to cause a fire. Yep, and it's set the best it can set. There's one little plus and minus knob on those guns and they're not just for, it doesn't, it's not a digital. It's an inexpensive airport gun. We could say. One blast every twenty minutes or thirty minutes. These are just, turn it this way, see what happens. It's whatever the gun does. So that's, this is crazy, you know? The can, yeah, the cannons are affecting my peaceful enjoyment of my private property. That's what we have in our fireworks thing, you know? But again, like the chief said, like I kind of know. It doesn't, they're, they're going to hide behind this and they also want to hide behind this for the rest of the season, for the two weeks. They've turned it down a little bit right now, so maybe it's quiet today, but once you go, come Saturday, Sunday, when they're not around, boom, boom, I'm going to go nuts. And I tell you what, I don't have PTSD on the books. I have other problems that I had from flying, okay? But I'll tell you what, I stress is something I don't look for anymore. My whole life was stress. This is, this is stress, okay? I need to tell you something first here. You can read it after too, but. It says, I said twenty years helicopter pilot immunity, eleven for life, eleven flying for lifeflight and I was able to retire early, thank God. Now I am stressed, have stress and anxiety, having no control of these nuisance noises. Noise can affect all people differently. These are the things, anxiety, stress, nervousness, nausea, headache, emotional instability, argumentiveness. Sexual problems, change in mood, increase in social conflicts, neurosis, hysteria and psychosis. Others and myself have experienced some of these symptoms daily and it really has. If you think about the call of chief God and you listen to the people calling, I'm sure there's a lot of anxiety. I'm sure there's a lot of stress, argumentiveness. We've had one person, I say no name, who's called Cooper twice. And basically it didn't go well, both of them talking to each other. So that's the type of things. And we also can't forget. Is noise is bad for living creatures. Noise pollution could cause hearing loss, rapid increase in heart rate among animals. High noise levels are very painful for dogs, causing them to pace and bark excessively and I'm. Sure, he's had it with his dog and next to me has had it and I have a farm across the street that just, one of, Emily drove five thousand miles to pick up a new horse, baby horse that she got that's right on the property line and. I'm sure there's stress for those animals, but anyways, okay, so I never, my, my training is in the military, you know, I'm not that smart. I can't write, can't read. I got spell check. Doesn't work out well, but I did put in here. Alternative ways to mitigate crows, okay? I know for a fact. That they did not research this stuff and I know for a fact that they'll tell you that they put up some balloons, which I know for a fact were like four days ago when they were at my house last. And he said, I'm going to move the gun from near your house, which doesn't matter because the blast waves go. Right here and it hurts. He put up the, he put up on this thing here, it's called bottom, the bottom of it is holographic scare devices and scare balloons. These little balloons are maybe a foot. Unfortunately, they're not the right ones. They come in like thirty-six, forty-six inch balloons and they have owl eyes that are holographic. And those are the ones that are big and they just sit there like that. It's really nice and the sun hits the eyes different and the crows hate those, okay? There's other things there as trapping and hunting crows. I cannot hunt a crow past August first. I get like five or six in my backyard, okay? And they told me once, oh, well, if you shoot them, bring them over. We'll take the dead bodies. Well, guess what? If I shoot them, I'm getting a visit because it's against the law. I don't have a, I don't have a hunting permit and it should be hunting crows anyways, but anyways, they, if they go to the main state biologist, they will give them an unlimited hunting license. To hunt the crows on their property and whoever does it does not need to have a hunting license. And then to these first two top ones, the distressed bird call harassment device, what those are called, what those are squackers. And they come from companies that mimic birds of prey, no, paper, I don't know, birds of prey. I flew offshore for a couple of years out of Gauss in Texas and down there and all the platforms I went to had the. You know, crazy stuff. Where's the bird? But what it's doing is keeping the animals away from their platforms. And those speakers can be put everywhere. He can have those for twenty years and wonderful, you know what I mean? And it works great. And also the companies that put those also change tapes, they have so often digital things and allow them to change it up or whatever. And then the last one, which I talked to Kirk today, I gave him one of these just to give it to him. There's a, there's a chemical called Avatral. And again, the orchard didn't do its due diligence to check all this stuff out before they want to drive us completely nuts, okay? And Avatral, what it is, it's a chemical, amateur by bludly, I can't say it. Anyways, what it does is Avatral causes behavior simple, simple, similar to an epileptic seizure. Birds eating the traded bait will emit distress signals used by their species when they are frightened or injured. This may be, this may include flying erratically, vocalizing, trembling, dilation of pupils and other systems, other symptoms. This will frighten the flock and cause it to leave the site. The birds affected are in no pain. They are, also have no secondary poisoning with Avatral, a fact with this, a fact which is confirmed by the US Fishing Game Wildlife Services. Basically a five gallon tail, if they don't want to mix it themselves, of corn that you put out these about the size of this, little things everywhere. They can put on the roof, they can put in the orchard, they can put it along the outside perimeter of their thing. The crows go and eat the corn that they scoop out of the bucket and they go, and they don't like it. They all warn each other and they're out of there. And if you go to the Avatral site and you look at them, their company. They're like a hundred percent, this stuff works. And also Avatral comes in a five gallon liquid thing, where apparently you can go make it yourself. I mean, heck. I look for an option. I look for an answer and I don't want to call Mr. Cooper himself because I've heard different things and I, I'm not sure. I don't know him, but I do know I'm being tortured to death. And I always look for an answer. I don't just make fun of somebody and say, no, I want to make sure that there's a way out. So again, if, read the things. Thank you for your time. I don't know what to do, okay? And I really love living here, but I tell you what, if I know every year, July, August into September.
Summertime, God.
Yeah, summertime.
When we want to be outside.
Which we have four, we have four days of summer and what? Rest is winter? Do you like snowmobiles? I don't. So anyways, I hope I, I'm sorry if I took a lot of your time. Thank you for letting me talk, okay? Because, yeah, I am at the point where I'm going to have to go to Togus again and talk to those people because this is not good, okay? And if somebody goes and takes it, comes to the house, he goes, oh, I hear a little pop. Oh, it's okay. No, it's not that. It's the constant dripping, constant, constant, constant. And then also you get to the point, I went out at eight o'clock the other night and just stood in the driveway and just listened to air and just listened to whatever was there because it felt good, felt good. If, if you shouldn't be around Mr. Cooper, there's two little pitches for him, okay? And there's the same evidence in the back to help him if he wants Avatral, he wants to do something. If he wants help, I would, I'd go, I don't want to work for anybody, but I'd go help him, okay? And also apparently you're here, you're here for the same reasons or different reasons? No, different reasons? Okay, good. Then I don't have to give you one. I'd give you one if you wanted one. And what is this? I don't know what this is.
That's, that's.
This one ticket already? All right. Thank you so much. Taking over two minutes of your lot of time. I know. Oh my God. I tried to practice. I read, I read the first page and a half in three minutes. I said, I can't do this. Sorry, thank you.
I won't take two minutes. If that's okay. I'm, I'm.
Till I drive you.
That's right. That's right. I'm Ernie LaCombe. I'm one twenty-eight Norris Hill. I live uphill from Pat and next door. So the greenhouse, I'm on the top of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway. We're a transplant. We've been, it'll be three years Labor Day. We've been there and we love it here. But I, I did a little fact finding myself because, you know, it's. You know, and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a nice house. You know, it's, it's, it's a nice house with tight thermal pane windows and doors, you know? And I got a dog who is not doing well under this. You know, because they hear better than we do. And he's nine years old and he's going. Every time he hears it, you know, and he's like not eating some days. And my wife is like, you gotta go talk, you gotta go see, you gotta, you know, and I'm like, honey, Pat, Pat's all over him. Um, you know, but anyway, I just wanted to read you just a quick statement and then I'll let you be, okay? Uh, propane fired cannons also known as bird bangers. Um, are not only disrupted, disruptive to the neighboring houses around the orchard, but also to pets living in the area. Propane cannons when fired range from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty-five decibels, depending on the make or model of the cannon. The human pain threshold for noise is a hundred and twenty decibels. Our nine-year-old dog jumps or flinches almost every time the cannons go off. And has not been eating well, often skipping, skipping meals since the firing began. I have tremendous respect for business owners. After all, I am one. However, in my business, we must respect all neighbors surrounding the properties we work on. So to keep peace among neighbors, and that's exactly what we're asking for. My objective here is not to place burden on the orchard owner, but to unburden the surrounding homes from the torturous booming. That the orchard owner did not apparently consider when purchasing the cannons to deal with this crow problem. My wife and I love our property in Monmouth. We love our neighbors. But the use of these cannons cannot be allowed to disrupt a very short summer season in total disregard of their, of their neighbors. There are multiple ways of scaring birds from fruit farms and vineyards. And there are many alternatives to the extremely disruptive propane cannons. My wife and I implore you. To encourage them to stop using these cannons immediately. For our well-being and the health of my dog, for our well-being and my neighbors and the health of my dog. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
How many neighbors are affected by?
I think we have another neighbor on Zoom up there. If you mentioned Emily.
Yes, I would did, wasn't sure if I was allowed to talk over this, so I was gonna wait until they were done. Um, so yeah, Pat had mentioned me. Um, we're Elmcrest Farm, so we have the farm across the street from Pat and Ernie. Um, and obviously our property abuts um, the orchard. And as Pat said, it's a beautiful orchard. They've done wonderful, wonderful things with it. Um, what we have noticed is we have a herd of thirty cattle. Um, we have horses, um, goats, pigs, all sorts of animals. Um. We have our own defense mechanism, so I actually have a livestock guardian dog. Um, to help with coyotes and foxes here. He lives with the cows. His sole purpose is to alarm us of coyotes or um, strangers essentially. Um, it's basically, you know, our version of these cannons. And he's our first line of defense for protecting our crop, which is beef, pork, you know, the whole thing. Um, since these cannons have started. Our livestock guardian dog, who should be out with the cows, is too terrified to stay out in the pasture with the cows. Doing his one job that he has done his entire life. And this dog doesn't know he's a dog. He thinks he's a cow. Um, so for us, we respect. We want everybody, especially in agriculture, to be able to protect what they have spent so much time and money on. However. It doesn't seem, and I hate to use the word fair, but. We aren't able to protect our crops now because of what our neighbors are doing to protect theirs. And it is stressful for all of the animals here. Um, I, to be fair, I do think that to a certain extent, some of them have become accustomed to the sound. Um, but like Pat said, I have a couple of new horses here who, after making a three thousand mile journey. The stress of basically hearing gunshot, repeat, 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 repeat. That has been a very difficult adjustment. Um. But honestly, I, I, the biggest thing for us is we have a big, beautiful backyard. And like Pat said, it's not enjoyable. We can't even sit out there. Um, and there's nothing to block the sound for us. It is, you know? It's four, five hundred feet, maybe our property line from theirs. Um, and it's loud and it's hard to convince a, you know, hundred and twenty pound dog that he shouldn't be scared of this. Because his cows are out there and he's supposed to be alerting us of predators. Um, and it's been a, I didn't really want to say anything because I'm a neighbor. Uh, we abut their property line. I don't know them. I've never interacted with them and I am okay with that. Um, but it's concerning to sit here and bring up points when I know that they're just trying to protect their crop. But I'm over here trying to do the same thing. And I can't do that because of what the defense mechanism that they're using. And that's been very stressful on us as a family here trying to do this. We've had issues with coyotes before, that coyotes are not afraid of people around here. Um. So it's been really hard to know that. Our major defense system, which is the dog, who has been very effective, can't do his job now. Um, because he's terrified of the booms and just wants to hide. Um, so I didn't come with any facts. I really just came to listen, but then I felt like I needed to say something. Um. I didn't come with alternatives. I really just wanted to, I guess, reiterate the fact that, you know, it's. It's other animals, it's people, it's other people's livelihoods that are impacted by. What they've chosen to use as a defense mechanism when it sounds like Pat came up with some decent alternatives. Um. But I just wanted to voice our opinion and kind of where. What we've noticed and where we stand on it, because it's hard for one. Agriculture family to want to diminish what somebody else is doing to protect what they've worked for, but. When it starts to impact us, that just, it, it makes it really hard. And that's all I have. And I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Emily. Uh, Emily, Ken Ackley here. Um, have you uh, had a chance to discuss your issues with? The folks from the Department of Agriculture, because really, really what, what the chief has pointed out to us. From a legal standpoint, is that we're somewhat restricted if, if a farmer is using what they recognize as the best practice. Um, we're somewhat restricted to uh, any type of regulation that we can, we can put on that if they recognize it as a best practice. And what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is that their best practice is interfering with your best practice. Correct. So it's farmer on farmer. It's not.
Farmer on neighbor.
Farm, well, I mean, ultimately, the reason we have the Maine Agricultural Protection Act. Uh, used to be known as the right to farm, was that farmers were getting surrounded by residential. Uh, uses of land and then they were being put out of business by people. Who were telling farmers they couldn't be doing what they've always been doing, traditionally been doing. Uh, they kind of got voted off the island, essentially. And so that's sort of the history behind why. Uh, the town is somewhat limited, uh, in, in, uh, a legal aspect about what it can do. But when, when the balance is actually one farmer's. Uh, approach in competition with another farmer's approach, that might actually have a little more traction with the. Department of Agriculture, because now we're talking about two farmers that are using. Competing approaches that are sort of, you know, neutralizing their defense mechanism.
So if we know the. Person from the Department of Agriculture that came out, we could get that name too, that you be able to talk to him directly and.
I don't know his last name, but the person we spoke with both times, his first name is Matt.
Matt. Yeah, and you know, but it's so strange because we have the, the apple. Uh, the apple, um. Cooperative extension there that in testing site that, you know, somehow, why would you not reach out to the people that? I mean, obviously Highmore's never used them.
That was actually one of the points that I was going to mention, but I didn't want it to be a tit for tat thing. But.
So, you know, if. They were effective, you know, or that they were the right thing to do. So, you know, I would reach out to the person that's already come. And also try to see if there's somebody at Highmore that you can chat with.
Can I, can I just add one of what I think is somewhat obvious? The crows didn't just show up this year.
No, they've been around.
The year before, in the eleven years previous that Pat was there.
I've had them my whole life with a type of garden.
I know, but well, my point in saying that is they introduced these cannons. Two weeks ago. So what were they doing previous to this that was compatible with neighbors? Because, you know, that, that's my, my biggest question is, they were obviously doing something.
My understanding is they put the Honeycrisp in four years ago. This problem has been, because for some reason the crows gravitate towards those Honeycrisp brand apples. And uh, so this is, this is. As the years go on, they're in their fourth year with this, this brand and they're getting decimated by the crows and that's why they. With this extreme approach, what he was telling us.
It's a high sugar content in the Honeycrisp and that's why they like going after. And also, when I read the bylaws, whatever it is to come in here, it says nothing about talking about the other people doing whatever, whatever. But there have been some lawsuits from people, the farms. And I'm not gonna waste my time. I don't think I have to do that. And why should I be the person doing this or my money? But some of them, not some of them, the ones that I saw that one had came to something where one was. One time a day, they can set off their cannons. That's cool. I guess I could live with that. Maybe I won't be home. But you know what? We need somebody, the chief has tried with his amazing people to talk to this guy. I've talked to all the workers. Somebody, you sound agricultural to me, Ken. Um, somebody needs to go to this guy and, and you know what? He's, he's also gonna play out the time clock too. He's gonna play out this two-week deal so he can get his harvest in. He's got a million dollar machine in there. It looks at every apple. I understand all that, but you know what? What if I was a veteran who couldn't handle it? Okay? What if he had to come after me? What if I did something myself? What if my attitude at home gets really ugly to my family for no reason, which it is already, but not at my family, just ugly, okay? So these are the things, I don't like being in a position where we can't go anywhere because the state goes, I'm sorry, but they're farmers. Well, you know what? Emily's family's the most amazing farmers, you know, they're awesome. And if you see how hard they work, they work harder than the apple guy who's lives in South Paris. I'm not supposed to say all the stuff here. Who lives in South Paris, who has ten feet, ten orchards everywhere and this big guard dog because everybody must have problems with him. And you know, this is, this is, I need help. We need help. And I don't think another thing is asking Emily for help to go against the state. I understand their rights, whatever they want to do, but they got enough to do too, you know? As I'm sorry, Emily, if you want to do it, fine, but I don't think that we have to bear her, she has to bear all our brunt. To try to get this guy to stop, because there's gonna be next year and the next year and next year, you know? But thank you, everybody. And thank you, Emily, for coming on tonight. I super appreciate it.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for doing all the work that you did to uh, do discuss.
It's what warrant officers do in the army, you know? Kirk, the marine did all the hard work. I just sat around thinking.
But you know, as you said, it, it, or when you asked about how many neighbors are being affected, I can hear it on Maple Street. I didn't know what it was and it's obviously not like it is in his backyard.
I want to be here tonight. This family homeschools. He's got three daughters.
Yeah.
They homeschool. Can you imagine that? Like usually kids, they don't have cell phones. They don't do that game. So they're actually probably thinking, which is pretty cool. Can you imagine this? This is, and I know the dad's gone into the, this things I met, I wrote here about having stresses and different things. He used to want to call Cooper. I know at the bottom of Blue Road and, I don't say where, but there's, there's a young family there, but I know there must be baby stuff out. So there's a mother with a child, you know? I don't know where the chief lives. I don't want to know. And um, but I'm saying he can hear it too. I was surprised when I heard the chief can hear it, you know? So we're kind of in a, what do we do? We got the state, another entity, we're our entity. Somehow we took a vote on the fireworks ordinance and we, you know, we did that. And, but now it's very strange. So we need a strong individual that can go there. I mean, I'll go see him, but I've already got the feeling that, like I said, he's gonna run out the time clock. Doesn't care, you know? Last page on that thing I wrote you was, please give me an ordinance, you know? Please, soon as possible. I'll buy him his Abatrol. I will, I will, I, I'll spend the two thousand dollars to buy his cannons back. And so much it hurts, okay?
Were you involved in that agriculture?
Yeah, I was on the agriculture committee when I served in legislature.
So having been there.
I could probably give Matt a call and see what can be done.
Yeah.
I don't, uh, certainly worth uh, uh, an outreach. And by the way, I, I was one of the folks who wrote the fireworks ordinance. So I totally get it. And part of the reason we have a fireworks ordinance was because Chris has horses.
Yeah, so and forty-five decibels is really, if you look at a chart, it's between a little higher than talking and something else. So it, it's not a decibel thing. It's a complete torture. And also Emily brought up what it does to her farm. I had no idea it's affecting their, the dog that it takes care of the animals. I would have went a lot quicker and a lot harder, you know, but I waited for the meeting here and um. But I understand where you all stand too, and I thank you for doing the jobs you do.
Chief, do you, do you have the contact information for Matt and for?
I, I can get it to you.
Okay, and, and for Mister Cooper as well? Okay.
I think that's a place to start.
It, it sounds like we don't have a, a legal. Stand to do something, but we do have a bully power and bully pulpit power. And maybe by writing a letter to this Mister Cooper, asking him to consider these alternatives that you came up with.
His social media has been shut down tonight for some weird reason, his, his Facebooks.
But he, he probably gets you as mail.
Yeah, well.
He could mail him a letter.
The Sun Journal and the Kenabunk Journal has all this too. I sent it to them because it's, I, there's nobody other than talking. You know, and apparently, like I said, he's gonna run out the time clock, play the game. I'm gonna forget about it through Christmas. And come summer with spring and I go, see, yeah, beautiful summer and then boom. But hopefully he gets the back page and learns how to mitigate all these crows with a little bit of money. Because if you get a million dollars worth of apple crops, I'm pretty sure you can buy Abatrol. I'm pretty sure you can buy the bigger balloons with the holographic eyes. You know, I'll help him put it up. I'll feed his crows. So unfortunately, and I know the mentality because I know they bought it from Holland. I know how much he spent, two grand. I could have got it for fifteen hundred because I shot different when I looked them up. And I'm not here to attack them. I'm here to, hey, look dude, I'll help you, but. Don't be a you know what, because this is my life.
I, I appreciate what you're suggesting and that my reason to come here was to implore you. To intervene because my wife and I worry about our little dog and I'm worried about Pat. I'm not mauling you long.
So how many, how many cannons are there?
Four, four, four of them.
So the other.
Acres a piece.
Yeah, that's another relative. I'm guessing he has more than two hundred and forty acres, but you know, they're, they're rated for sixty acres a piece. I know where though the, the crop is that I can see. That's not two hundred and forty acres.
But a cannon blast is like when you put your calm water and you hit the water and you watch the, watch the ripples in the water. These ripples are out in the field and no matter where they are, there's gonna be ripples. And Emily, God forbid, they live closer to me and I whatever, those ripples are coming up and they're hitting here. And after a while, constant barrage of a constant, it's like when you take a dog and you beat it up all the time. And then somebody goes and adopts it and they just want to pet the dog, the dog flinches, the dog doesn't like it. So these, this, and I talked to them too. I says, how about getting a sheet of. So these, this, and I talked to them too. I says, how about getting a sheet of plywood, cutting it in half, putting it behind the gun and using it as as a back blast area, like they do either with, you know, aircraft, giant ones in the jets down at the jet port or anything and divert that water, like you see the little ripple. But again, if I ripple, if I get him away from my house, am I hitting his house? Am I hitting somebody else's house down the road, you know? But again, best practices, I think it's a joke. I don't think that they have. I like to see in writing what they think, how many blasts an hour, how many blah, blah, blah. I don't think their best practices are normal. And the stuff I showed to mitigate all that stuff, he can do all that. He can get that reflective tape that they sell in a five hundred foot rolls and run it right down everything forever. You know, he's got enough, he's gonna have ninety Jamaicans there in two, for two months picking apples. I'm pretty sure some of them can help him with all sorts of stuff. But anyways, maybe he doesn't know what's going on. Maybe he just, maybe he doesn't care, you know, but.
Uh, yeah, well, uh, I'm sure he and his legal counsel will probably be watching this video.
Yeah, Pat, you're a one thirty in North So Road.
So, uh, um, I guess.
We have that actually win too. Sure, so the wind's blowing it too.
I I guess my suggestion would be that before we, that that we start with the conversation and come back, perhaps at our next meeting, to have another conversation about it on on the record. And if we have any difficulty getting a hold of Mr. Cooper, having that conversation, then we could talk about next steps, but next steps might be uh, uh, potentially writing a letter. Uh, en- encouraging him to explore alternatives.
You don't write a letter right now.
I would, I would.
I mean, I I don't. And every day that it says, just remember.
I know, I I hear you, but I, my, and 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 I'm open.
Yeah, good.
But my, my, we're the idea is to engage in a, in a non-confrontational way.
Actually, whatever method, you're in my town, select, select people, sorry.
I'm sorry. I call myself. I call myself a.
Yeah, um, we're here because I I have no other way to turn. I, the officers helped us the best they could and they're super awesome. And I I went over there and talked to the people myself. So I'm gonna leave it. If you don't see me at another meeting, it's just because I'm, I'm just praying and just sitting in a corner. Because I can't bring anything other to you than what I brought.
And we appreciate that.
So.
And and if you can't make it here, you can always zoom in, or you can, you can watch it after the fact.
Oh, is it every month?
Yeah.
I know, but anyways, thank you so much, okay?
And. You're welcome. We will, we'll, we'll, we'll jump on it and we hear.
And I'll be studying.
Thank you.
I'll be studying some other things.
For hearing us.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other good stuff that'll be fun to listen to?
Do you want me to do? I can read, if you don't wanna be next, I'll read Dan's, Dan Roy's report. You wanna be next?
Oh, I don't, I don't have a department report. Okay. I don't have a department report, I just have the agenda item.
At the end, okay. So I'll read this, um, from Fireman Dan. Apologies for missing the meeting. He's working on a state and traveling back tonight. Um, and so number one, the fire department has been relatively busy the past few weeks responding to calls. Our current tally is at a hundred and one calls since January first. In the coming weeks, the furnace at the north station will be replaced. Funds were already budgeted for this expense on next Thursday. Um, the fire department will be conducting water rescue training with Marine eighty-four on Cottonawagan. On Friday, August nineteenth, the fire department's golf scramble will take place at the Meadows and Litchfield to benefit the nine one one, nine eleven memorial. Um, and the response has been overwhelming. And he thanks everybody for their support. The fire department is planning to conduct a ceremony on Sunday, September eleventh. The time to be announced to unveil um, the new memorial. That will take place in twenty twenty-three. So I guess they're gonna have a ceremony, but obviously, the the piece of metal from the towers won't be unveiled until twenty twenty-three, okay? That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, it's like you don't really have a report.
Not, nothing to share tonight.
Okay, so the uh, select board reports, I think, I don't know. You wanna say something?
Yes, um, one of the things that was brought my attention uh, at the town office, considering Justin was out for training and Lori was gone, that one of the town employees, Jessica, is there on her own, um, which is a little bit concerning. Um, given the fact that there's, there's finances there and um, we may wanna look at that. Um, if we can't have more than one employee in the building, that maybe we shouldn't have the building open on those particular days. Paul?
Um, just to let you know that I was, I was asked by Justin and and Lori um, to have the officers go in and out of the building at different times during the day, just to make sure she was all right. We made sure that the door between the public and her area was kept locked. Um, so there were, there were provisions made to make sure that we were stopping by and make the invisible in there as well, but I.
Something to think about anyway.
Yeah, I I know Lori tried to get, uh, well, Lori differed to, she's sometimes come in and uh, on these kind of occasions and she, she was, couldn't do it. And also, a previous employee, we had Deb, Debbie. Nichols, yes, uh, she uh uh, was unable to either, also, so kind of was a uh, I was sorry. Unfortunately. Yes, like I had to be there. And I, and I know, I I thought maybe it should just be, you know, we should just announce it and close it for the.
Which is gonna be a big inconvenience for some people that are trying to get there to get things done, but um, the the training, I guess, is announced far enough ahead of time, so we should be able to.
Yeah.
Make accommodations for it. And one of the other things I had, uh, Reagan from the Economic Development Committee made a call to me yesterday um, inquiring about the status of the lumberyard on two oh two here in town. Um, trying to confirm rumors that it was gonna be sold, uh, and it will no longer operate as a lumberyard here in town. Um, it is being bought out by another company and that facility will be closed and the property will probably go for sale. Um, the good news is there is another business in the area that is cramped for space and has expressed an interest in in the building, so there may be another business going right back in fairly soon, which will be good for the town.
But the lumber?
No, it will not. No, it will not be able to operate as a lumberyard for a year
Yeah.
when the the sale agreement goes through.
There's a non-compete essentially, you know, written into the purchase and sale, so. But I know a lot of contractors are feeling that. Yep.
And that's all I have.
Yeah, and I had sent Justin and Reagan, or asked Justin to reach out to Reagan to see if there was something we could do to try to facilitate some sort of change of heart, but I'm not sure what's gonna happen there.
If you have anything.
No. I've been in touch with Justin about the new law that is in effect. Um, for citizens sixty-five years of age or older, which would, if if you have a homestead and you've had one for ten years, your taxes are frozen. Um, the application, he tells me, is available at the town office right now. And probably, uh, we should let people know that, uh, that's available to them. Um, he's convinced that the next legislative session will probably do some amendment of that, of that law. Uh, it, they called it a sleeper bill. It got in there and no one paid much attention. And uh, what happens is that, um, as as time goes by, by and more people turn sixty-five, it's gonna cost the state a lot of money. And maybe, I mean, maybe the state is better able, I mean, the property tax is a regressive tax. And maybe having a broader base and putting it on the state is a good idea. I mean, they're, um, because people who are able to pay income tax get paid, they pay more in taxes than people who might be getting minimal amounts of money. And when they get a two thousand dollar tax bill or a three thousand dollar tax bill and they only get nineteen thousand dollars a year, it's, it's a real burden. It is a real burden. So anyhow, the application is available. People should avail themselves. You have to have it submitted before December first.
Yeah, I think, uh, we've all heard stories about folks who, uh, uh, are forced to sell a property because the property taxes are increasing faster than inflation. Yeah, and I think this is one of those efforts to mitigate if you're on a fixed income and inflation means your income is regularly adjusted and the property taxes exceed that, then um, yeah, I mean, I've lost count of the number of people I know who, uh, can't, can't, uh, can't afford, uh, the the increase of property taxes. Um, I did think of one thing, one question, uh, for our public works, works director, do we get the stickers for the dump order?
It's in progress.
In progress.
Myself, the transfer station manager, uh, and the town office need to have a meeting and discussion uh, about exactly what we're gonna do and and bring it to you, the board, to finalize the decision on the whole process.
Okay. Can, can we, uh, do something here tonight? Uh, uh, is it, can, can we have a plan for these people?
Uh, regarding the.
What are, what are we gonna do for them?
Think he's.
Starting tonight.
I have trusted him to formulate it.
So it would, it would be my, it would be my suggestion that we, uh, take the next, the the time between this meeting and next.
Let, let them, let, let, let them endure this for that long.
Nothing we can do.
I, I, I we don't have a legal basis to show them that.
I would challenge that statement.
Uh, according to the, according, from what I'm hearing from the chief, and he's our best legal resource here, at the moment. And based, and based on the information that I'm hearing from the chief in terms of the judging, judgment from agriculture conservation grocery department, um, that it's their opinion that this is the best practice. If, if that is in fact true, I'm just hearing from our legal expert here, if that is in fact true, uh, then we have to uh, it would be my advice that we try to negotiate.
Yeah, how can we monitor what a best practice is if we don't know what the standard is for a best practice?
And so.
Could we see, have them show us what a best practice for a cannon is?
So, so, uh, reaching out to the folks at ACF, Matt at ACF, to find, to ask that very question is, I think, the next step, and I'm happy to do that.
Answer, but at least there's an answer.
Like, is it, so Highmore, aren't they the experts on all, all things agricultural?
Well, Cooper would definitely challenge that.
He doesn't have a rotten well for any reason.
Yeah. Well, you wonder why it's the best practice when there are other methods.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. That's that.
Thank you.
So.
Well, it's not the best practice, a best practice.
And maybe you set them up, you don't cause fires, and they go boom, hey, that's cool. You know, that's why I said, I bet you there's nothing written that, how many acres, how many blasts, how much of this? And should you monitor it? What's the times of day? I I know there's nothing like that. I know there's nothing. I couldn't find it. I looked myself. I couldn't.
So I I'm, I'm open to suggestion about what our next steps are. And if, 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 if folks here, if folks here wanna write a letter, that's fine. Um, I'm, if we're attempting to negotiate neighbor to neighbor, then coming screaming into the room with a letter and a, and a, and a phone call and a, and a bunch of I mean, I'm, I'm more of an incremental negotiator, like I give them a call and I say, hey, we've got some ideas, we've got some problems, we're trying to work this out, neighbor to neighbor. Uh, uh, Kim, are you willing to work with us? And if the answer is no, or the answer is, you know, song and dance, or the answer is play for time, then, then maybe, maybe the next step is to write a letter.
Plan B, yes. So I'm all for, Ken, if you're having written and been involved in the, um, legislature. Um, yeah. Reaching out to the Department of Agriculture, getting some facts and and then, however, you want to handle reaching out to Cooper, saying, look, this is, we've been, this has been brought to us and we'd like to work with you on it, so, cause as always, you know, trying to do things non-confrontationally and you get more flies with honey, you know, kind of thing.
Which is across the street. I'll literally feed the crows that stuff and get them go nuts. I mean, I will, if he buys me two hundred and forty-five dollar pail, I'll start feeding them. But the thing is, if you're gonna use these guns and you think you're gonna use them, somebody needs to monitor whether or not they need to run like that. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna give in to the fact to use those. There's other quiet things that other orchards use to mitigate problems. And I know this hasn't been looked into. They're gonna say they put balloons, but what about the forty-six dollar ones that are four feet wide and have holographic eyes and look like
Right.
scary.
So, 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 um, so Doug, coming, coming back to the answer to your question. Um, uh,
Right now, they're.
I can't.
We don't have, we don't have a legal.
There's no court, there's no judge that's gonna say, okay, Pat, um, you're special, I'm gonna talk to you tomorrow. It's not gonna happen. So I understand it, but if, if, if Ken has the right people and talk to, and they talk to, uh, Mr. Cooper, he may be a great guy. And I know, I know he told the neighbor that he had two phone calls with it, didn't work out too well. I know he said he's never been down there. So he doesn't know what kind of torture we're getting. So it's, it's whatever. I mean, I was, thank you though. Thank you, thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna put some time to you.
In, in your, um, offer to speak with Matt from the Department of Agriculture.
Yep.
Introduce, you know, Emily and the, and the budding farm in that conversation.
Sure. Oh, yes, absolutely.
Changes anything in his thinking about.
That would be the direction I would go, is to say, look, we've got a farmer who's creating a nuisance for another farmer.
Using their rules against them.
What's the, what's the process here? Because that's.
How do I become a farm?
There you go. Now you're thinking.
Are you still seeing a lot of birds in the area?
I got, I got my favorite five crows that come all the time. I know they're there. Today, when the guns, when the guns were not going as consistent and not the ones closest to us, everything was calmed down today. I don't know why. But I watched two crows across the street at Kim Emily's and I watched them, I said, and I giggled. I'm looking at them sitting there, you know? But again, there's no effort to make, do something.
About, oh yeah, about your little birds, are they still around or?
My little birds.
No, I'm asking, are they still around?
Yes, yeah, little birds do their thing. It's all good. He feeds the birds. Yeah, but it's, uh. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, anyway, I, we, we didn't, we didn't really get a clear answer on my question about stickers. So we're reconsidering the process, is that the?
We, we're, we're not, no, we will get stickers.
Okay.
Stickers are going to be what we go to. It's just, uh, figuring out the spidey work with details that comes out of doing a changeover and making sure that we have all the bases covered. And as many questions, uh, many answers to questions that might come up and how we work the process.
Okay, so, so it's an implementation plan?
Yeah.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Buy him once a year, I'm happy. Yeah, fifteen bucks, make money. Go for it.
Yeah.
Do we know why we stopped using the stickers?
I know. We had, we went through that. You'd have to go back through those old meetings. I don't remember any.
They're expensive, I was told. I mean, they are expensive.
I heard it was a cost.
Yeah, that's what I say. I don't mind paying the money, but I I and I I don't, but I do mind having to show something like I'm a nobody and finding out that I have to report to three different people inside the station. And I got, this is what happened, spiked spiked it. I got yelled at by my favorite person there. That because I was throwing my trash, I said, I already told that person. But yeah, it's it doesn't, it's good. I don't mind paying for it, speaking as a person who just showed up for the meeting. I'll give you money and it'll make money if it helps make offset the cost of dumping that stuff with diesel and all sorts of stuff. That's what we're all here for. Take care of each other. All good.
So I'll do a public comment. Any public who want to comment?
I like your hat, by the way.
I want to thank Kristen and her board or whatever she's doing next door to put it up the map of what the building is gonna look like. However, you're missing a floor. The back building has two floors. What is the top floor gonna look like?
Mechanicals.
All mechanicals, no public space.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's why we have no elevator, no way to get up there other than a pull down ladder.
That no second floor. That's the questions I'm getting. I was at Knowles today.
And they just tell them to reach out to the board or if they want to know, because obviously the floor plan is the floor plan is the floor plan. If there's no second floor.
But they're looking at a building with two floors.
Yeah.
They're looking at the building. It has two floors. The map, the plan only showed one floor. That was
Because that's all that's gonna be habitable or usable, so.
Then that should be said. That's all I'm saying.
I'll go get a sharpie. Installed the board, but um I'll ask them, we meet on the sixteenth, I think, Tuesday coming. So I'll ask them to see if there's somehow we can amend it.
Second floor is mechanical only.
And I'll put it in my select board notes.
Okay, that would be awesome.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Hey, while 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 we have you on the stand.
Yes.
How's Cocknoagian lake level?
Like bath water.
It's bath water.
Oh, of course, it's bath water everywhere.
Yeah.
So but but how's the water level?
I can walk out on it, not get up to my waist.
Okay.
It's shallow.
Okay.
More and more buoys showing up of high rocks.
Right.
And ever before. When I was ten, this was the level of the lake.
Right.
I just, the copper dam is in place. So if nature would like to provide water, the lake would rise. But until that happens, we've got what we got.
In just FYI, in Anabescuk, also bath water.
Yeah.
And we know the copper dam is in place because the lake is starting to go lower.
Well, my stream, which is one of the main streams coming in, all my property is dry. It's it's still getting soaked up before it hits the lake. So that's that's the problem.
Right, yeah, but the copper dam that they installed, the temporary dam they installed, has the capability to to hold the lake at the correct summer level. But we just need Mother Nature to cooperate.
Okay.
No algae blooms.
So the alum
Alum seems to be working okay. This heat, I cannot believe the alum treatment has worked. Because that should be blooming like you can't believe with the water above seventy five degrees.
And and now that you mention it, uh we are also seeing that in Anabescuk, that the water is very clear. I mean, some of that, I suppose, is due to drought that we haven't had like a big thunderstorm that throws a bunch of sediment in the lake.
Right. Was it heavy brown tail moth in the spring?
Yeah.
No, not really.
We we Cottley watershed had a meeting here last night.
Yeah.
Again, and we talked about That too. And 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 Wendy, and in fact, I should send it to, let's send you the pronouncing of what's going on. Cause you're gonna be
Whenever.
The the lake is at twenty three feet, the seki disc is visible from
Wow, that's impressive. It was a good investment from the town.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
That's why the dam has to be built.
And so even though the the you there's been erosion underneath the where the boards go. Oh, and so water is leaking, right? Or or going under.
It was.
It was.
There was an actual hole in the concrete dam that the company that came in to put the copper dam in found and repaired. The other part to it is that the the gate itself is eroded, deteriorated. And even when we fully close the gate, it doesn't fully close. So there was always flow, which further erodes everything there. So the copper dams in place, there's no flow now at all.
Oh.
It's completely blocked off. The lake, if Mother Nature cooperated, could rise to its normal level. And the copper dam would hold. And I know that yesterday, the engineer was there taking some more onsite measurements. Uh we basically need to replace the gate assembly before ice forms so that we can control the lake. And with them fixing the hole in the dam they found, and then a new gate that seals and operates appropriately for flow control, we should be good to go.
Is any of this something Public Works can do? Or it requires a?
No, we could, I could maybe yank the old gate assembly out and bring it to somebody and say, here, copy it. But I think the engineer is working on a design, better design, that's gonna make opening and closing and and controlling the flow much easier.
Bring it out of the eighteen hundreds.
Yes. Yeah, maybe in the nineteen fifties.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh so uh since there's no public comment, other than what we heard, uh from next is to consider appointing Bonnie Green as an alternative alternate, an alternate planning board member. I shall move.
I'll second.
So there's a motion by Joe and a second by by Kate Kristen to appoint Bonnie Green as alternate planning board member. Okay, Bonnie?
She's muted.
She muted, okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Congratulations, Bonnie. Next is to consider approving
There she is.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, next is to consider approving an event application for Apple Fest.
I make a motion, we approve. I make a motion, we approve the event application for Apple Fest.
I'll second that.
Don't laugh, I called Hannah first. I did, I called her first.
So excuse me, I didn't get the, I was
I make a motion, we approve, we approve the event application for Apple.
Kent made a motion and Chris seconded to make them to approve the event application for Apple Fest. All those in favor? And next is to consider the paving recommendations and winter salt bid recommendation from the Public Works Director.
I gave you, uh yeah, I it should be winter stand. Yeah, I believe you all have a copy of what I sent to Justin for you to consider, uh which basically things that the last meeting we approved spending up to four hundred eighty thousand dollars on the recommended paving for this year, um out of the six hundred thousand allotment in the paving reserve fund. By approving that, it allowed me to uh work with the contractor that we approved, mainly paving directly to discuss all the options we have for doing the roads we approved. And one of the main things was his bid was based on a three quarter inch shim and then a one and a quarter inch overlay uh for a total of two inches of pavement, which uh is wonderful to have, but not necessary for our roads. So in talking to him about using a half inch shim and a one inch overlay in most places, he agreed that the roads would be uh fine with that reduced amount of tar. He revised his tonnage amount that he would need of pavement with those thicknesses. And that comes out to roughly uh three hundred and sixty to three hundred eighty thousand dollars uh for the paving for this year. Which gives us roughly about a hundred thousand dollars savings based off uh from the approved bid amount. I can see you already have a question. Am I, I'd be glad to answer a clarifying question.
Are there standards from DOT, main DOT about what they are willing to uh help us pay for? They give us a subsidy every year.
Yes.
Paving, and do they have any standards that are associated with that subsidy?
They do.
And does this, does this plan meet those standards?
Yes, our bid and this this these amounts meet all of the standards that MDOT um looks for.
Okay.
Um and and we require.
Okay. I just, I don't want any surprises down the road to have them come back and say, oh, sorry, you don't get your sixty grand or whatever it is that we budgeted for for their uh contribution to our paving.
Process. And I, I'm not a hundred percent positive in this, but I believe their contribution to us is for us doing the winter maintenance on their state owned roads. I believe that's what they're compensating us for.
Okay.
Uh not on the pavement we put on our roads, but for all the sand, salt and time we spend scraping and plowing the state roads. Uh two O two, Route one thirty five, Cottley.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
People question? Are we allowed to do that? Pretending, can I ask a question pretending to? I don't know. Okay, um how do we pick roads that we tar? Like, I'm not gonna say a road, Cressy Road. What do you tell the people that I hear grape and things? How do we do that in town? How do they, is a volume that the road is used, that the volume we 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 put?
You should go on YouTube and watch our meeting from last week.
From last week.
Two weeks ago. Don't hit me so hard.
The next part of this is about Cressy Road, so.
And oh, is it?
Yeah.
Didn't you after the meeting?
But but wait a minute, be prepared for your brain to explode.
So with this uh savings on the pavement, it allows me to present to you, uh for consideration, two additional projects that I had hoped we would be able to do with the six hundred thousand reserve fund, uh but were initially put aside due to how high pavement costs this year. The first project that uh comes up is the rebuild of Cressy Road. And we have a bid from Saint Laurent and Sun Construction uh for a hundred and fifty eight thousand nine hundred and seventy six dollars. This is grading the current base, adding six inches of very nice speck gravel that will hold, that will be pitched appropriately for water drainage and compacted, so it should stay in place for a longer period of time than what the non-existent road base is there now. Uh to be blunt, it's a Band-Aid for the road. The road will still be coming back. I'll bring it back to you in the next couple of years for consideration of pavement, but it'll be it'll be, the road will be in much better shape in the short term than it is now. It'll hold up better through the next few winters. So with the extra savings on pavement, that's the first project I'm asking you to approve out of that.
Dan, I I know that that's a partial solution to our Cressy Road issue.
Yes.
And does that also include, uh what is it, Pine Hill? There's a tail end of Pine Hill there that?
It does. It's the entire two mile section of Cressy from two O two to the tar at Pine Hill.
Okay, and and it's not surprising to hear you say this is a beginning, not an end.
Correct.
Is this the appropriate beginning? Like, if we're, I mean, suppose uh we suddenly found a million dollars and we said, oh, the purpose of this million dollars is to pave Cressy Road. Would this offset part of that million dollars? Uh because we're now spending it on six inches of base?
Not at all, to be blunt.
Okay.
In order to pave Cressy Road, we need to dig down the entire road twenty four inches and get whatever is there, which is probably rock and springs and thumps and everything else out and get an appropriate gravel base in there that's gonna hold up over time for a long time. So this this just makes it a better gravel road than it is now for a period of time that wear and tear and Mother Nature will determine.
And so a long term solution is a complete excavation of two miles of dirt road?
Yes, I'm, as long as I'm the Public Works Director, I I will be asking you to pave Cressy Road probably every year. Cause it's one of my biggest headaches in the winter. So that's the amount of, the amount of effort I spend on it in the winter to keep it well sanded and then passable in in the late winter and early spring is overwhelming.
Tell you I can run a grader?
Just got mine back from repair shop.
What they did to that, they took it down twenty four inches, replaced the gravel, put the uh fabric down and put good gravel on the top of it and then it was able to be paved. And there's only, out of all of that, there's only one spot that failed. And you know where it is? It's at the culvert. The culvert was placed too too hot. So in the wintertime, it goes down. But it's the only thing, you know, so it works doing it down twenty four feet. I mean, they took out all this this day that were working their way up to the circuit. Cressy Road is exactly the same.
And you know about Gilman Road?
And Gilman Road, the same, the same thing.
Same process.
Yes.
Complete excavation.
Complete excavation. I know where all the, I know where every inch of that stuff went. You know, you can still go down and look at it. It's still there and it's it was horrible stuff that came out. It all grows weeds, so it wasn't gravel. It was clay.
Tons of clay.
Tons of clay.
And you can't build on top of it.
Can't build on top of it. Yeah, by going down twenty four inches, you're taking those rocks that are thirty inches and giving them twenty years or thirty years to to come up on every frost.
Well, that's the nature of the beast in Maine. We grow rocks. I have a new batch every spring in my garden, so.
Your garden has every
Unfortunately, at Cressy Road, there's just nothing left of the road. I mean, maybe, I don't know, I'm speaking theoretically, maybe twenty years ago, thirty years ago, they put three thousand cubic yards of gravel on it and and built it up, but it's gone now. It's it's pushed off to the ditches. It's it's eroded away. It's washed away. The the road is down to what it was in, we'll say nineteen hundred. There's just, it's just the wagon wheel road. That's all that's left. There's nothing to work with to build the road back up. So it's either dig it all out, make it a new road, or in this case, haul in a lot of gravel and and get it pitched right so that it'll start draining better and and give us a few years of hopefully to reprieve and make it better for the residents there and and to work towards a more long term solution.
So do you want a motion on?
Well, I've got one more thing to
Yeah, I I don't know if you need separate motions on all of it or or you can lump it, I just, but yeah. The next uh project that this lower paving amount frees up is the Conson Hall parking lot uh and redoing the front section completely. And also adding additional uh paved parking spots on the backside of the building. Um, as I said, the bid from Saint Laurenton Sun was for fifty-one thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars. Their bid uh was very specific on the work they would do, which was uh exactly what my request uh for bid was for. Um, the next closest bid on that parking lot was just shy of a hundred thousand, it was ninety-nine thousand and change. And the third bid that we received uh on that parking lot was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, I think I might have stated at the last meeting that the constant hall parking lot and, you know, bid was, it was a tough one to to walk away from, but I had to with the previous bid amount for for paving. Um, but with the change in the in the tonnage and the amount of total for paving, it allows Cressy Road and Constant Hall Parking to be done, uh if you approve it. Um, the parking front lot at Constant Hall is, it's a lot like all of the other paved areas in this town. If we, we can leave it, but it'll be there next year, um, and it's it's bumpy, it's a mess, it it needs to be excavated out and properly paved and drained, um, and I, I think it's very wise money spent.
And and that bid will will do that, will uh will grade it so that water runs away from the building and.
Correct, they'll actually, if you look at the pavement, the pavement comes up even with the bottom steps on the front and sides of the building. This will pull that out, give a four inch gap from the top of the bottom step down to the pavement. And then there'll be roughly half inch per foot from there out to Main Street uh of a pitch, so the water will not go into Constant and create the issues that Dennis is seeing and and get it away from the building. So it, besides aesthetically and smoothness for everybody, it it will actually solve a massive uh drainage issue that the building deals with with water flow.
Well, it seems to me like it's been evident last winter with the the motion that you could see with the frost in the handrails on the front of the building where things are not lining up. And and that's just not good for an ancient building to have that kind of movement. Uh, that's pretty clear that there's water getting in underfootings and then freezing and then pushing things around. So. So, did you get more than one bid on the uh Cressy Road?
I did, uh, I had three bids on it, um. The bid from Saint Laurent was uh the um most cost effective by far, the other two bids. Well, I'm gonna, I have them right here, I could dig up the information if you want exact numbers, but I believe the other two were were both over two hundred thousand. Just for six inches of gravel pitched and and compacted.
And and you've had experience with Saint Laurent before?
I personally haven't, I can tell you that Gary Saint Laurent lives in the town of Monmouth, is a taxpayer and um, within reason of still making a a a reasonable profit, wants to do everything he can to help the town um have quality work done and not adversely affect his tax bill. I'm back, almost verbatim what he said to me.
Mister Chair, I make a motion that we uh authorize the expenditure of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars for uh improvement and rebuild uh to the Cressy Road. And we authorize fifty-one thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars for improvement uh to the paving of Constant, the Constant Hall parking lot.
Do you want to say anything about the rejection of the bid?
I didn't get to that yet.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's perfect, uh, it's a, it's a formality, uh, I put out to bid the winter sand uh that we use for the sanding the roads in the winter. Um, basically just due to the the purchase policy the town has and that amount of money has to be put out to bid. Um, I received one bid from C H Stevenson, um, very nice company, the gentleman actually lives in town uh that works for him, that does the bidding. Uh, unfortunately, his his bid came in either uh for either him transporting the sand to us or us picking up the sand from his pit uh at much more than we budgeted winter sand for. Um, so as a, just an exercise, I need you to reject his bid. Um, he's aware of it, we discussed it the day we opened the bid, um, and I will be, and I've already been in contact with the usual supplier of our winter stand, um, and we will, we will be all set, we'll be within budget, we will have all the sand we need, um, so.
And Mister Chair, I'd like to amend my amend my emotion to my motion to, yeah, amend my emotions to uh to reject the uh uh bid for winter sand from C H Stevenson, Inc.
I'll second, yeah.
So, um, let me help you get all this. Oh. Uh, Kent has made a motion to approve the uh a hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars uh for uh bid for a Saint Laurent construction to rebuild Cressy Road and to uh prove the uh fifty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the paving of Constant Parking Lot and the uh rejection of the bid for sand from C H Stevenson and uh with that motion, it was seconded by Chris. And all those in favor? Thank you. Next is.
Hey, thanks for including. Yeah, next year, next year.
Yeah.
Oh, whoa, man.
Lots of moving parts. Next is the warrant number three uh for twenty twenty-three. And I, this lady here is going to
Say highlight the
the uh expenditures that were over a thousand dollars.
Um, Barry Talbot and Roy, uh Royer, they're the new people doing our warrants in Pitten Hill. Six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, Blue Rock Earthworks um for transport from the uh, yeah, I always want to call it, the transfer station, four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. CMP two thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Kuzano wood removal from the transfer station, twenty thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and three cents. Eco main tipping fees, two thousand seven dollars and seven cents. Forty years tree service for tree removal on Norris Hill Road, four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Jack's sign shop, small equipment, so I assume they're low-going vehicles.
Yes.
The cruisers. Seventeen hundred dollars. Kilowatt energy for electrical work for the kitchen. That must be the fire department. One thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty cents. Lance's Auto and Truck Repair for Vehicle Repairs and Maintenance, four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-six cents. LP Corrier for the beach and North Main Street sidewalks. Five fifty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Main Resource Reparation Association for tire removal from the transfer station. Two thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents, Monmouth Water Association. Twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-four cents. Otis Elevator. Obviously, we only have one place that has elevator, that's Constant Hall for repairs and maintenance. Three thousand four hundred and one dollar and fifty-two cents, Hall Designs Projects, these are um the architects for the academy rebuilding, eighteen thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Somerset County Dispatch Services, nine hundred and nine, nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Bureau of Motor Vehicles, the State of Maine, fourteen thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and seventeen cents and white sign for signs. Two thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents.
Mister Chair, I make a motion that we approve fiscal year twenty twenty-three warrant number three.
Second. So, the motion by Kent and a second by Mark to approve the uh warrant number three for twenty twenty-three, all those in favor? Thank you.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. So guys, good night.
Thank you.
Dallas, let me, hey, where you going?